My goodness.
That's so good.
I hate to the table here.
Okay, I would like to, great, I would like to find the meeting's order and before I turn it over to our distinguished council president, I will ask the town manager to announce the protocols for the meeting.
Yes, as you heard, we heard very loudly in here, this meeting is being recorded. Typically, the discussion for these council work sessions is limited to the council or invited guests that might be asked to speak on specific topics. Just as a reminder, no legislative decisions are made at the council work sessions. Before anything is introduced or adopted, it will do, that will be done at a public town council meeting, there will be a public comments opportunity for adoption of any legislative any legislature that the council considers. If you do have a question, need clarification, something like that, please do feel free to message me on Zoom. Enable it so you can reach out directly to me, hopefully I can answer you as best I can as the conversation's happening, otherwise yeah, I'll get back to you after the meeting's done. And if our meeting gets interrupted and we aren't able to carry on with the business that we need to take, I'll end the meeting, I'll send out a new link for us to rejoin and we can pick up where we left off. But with that, I turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council President.
Okay, and now I will turn it over to our council president. And I want with the caveat that I, I do the first agenda, I don't know if I could say something.
Good, I will do. Just a quick question, do we, what is the status of Shannon?
Councilmember Roback is not able to join us this evening. Councilmember Kumar is, he's just wrapping up something on his personal side that if I'm just gonna join us as soon as possible.
That's right. She'll be on vacation.
Yes. Milestone, milestone birthday.
Oh, here's a member. Sorry, that was your. On the call. Apologies. So that was with the first agenda item, discussion on path forward with regards to public safety and police and Mr. Mayor, did you want to say?
So what I wanted to say about this is that councilmember Roback could not be here tonight, but she wanted me to pass on that she has again reviewed the recommendations of the Public Safety Committee and she supports them. In particular, the the motion to end the current extra police protection that we have, supplemental police protection we have pending discussions and consideration on of reenacting that service for alternative, the alternatives. And I also wanted to say that I support all of the recommendations of the committee. And so if you, if you decide after your discussion that you want to move forward on that, if three of you decide, then they can be, you can put it on the agenda for the March. And with that, I will turn it over.
So, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Shannon providing her comments since she couldn't be here tonight. We have another thorough summation of the of the program and recommendations regarding the town police program from Public Safety Committee. So, and I, I note that Kumar is, is online, but I'm not sure we need him to, to say anything. I, I guess I basically share Shannon's comments and I, the mayor's and I support these recommendations for us to to terminate, to bring to a smooth closure of the current arrangement and then we can also figure out what other ones we can have. So with, with that as leading, Rob, do you have any thoughts?
No, I mean, they're buried in the Public Safety Committee's recommendations is the idea that we take the same amount of money that we give to the police and apply them to security, safety in town, the money to safety in town, whatever measure, and Matt has described some options actually in his notes. I'm fully supportive of that idea.
Okay, great. Camille, do you have any, I don't know if you, you just got in, so I don't know if you.
Well, I was just wondering, what are the sort of practical implications? Is the program something one can terminate anytime, or is there, you know, are we contractually obligated to see it through a certain date? Just wondering practically, if there are any, you know, I don't know if that was in the extent of public safety recommendations.
No, there's no contract that we're obligated to participate in and through a certain date. So, you know, it's, it's at our discretion. We have two secondary agreements, one of which actually lapsed in January. So I was kind of waiting for direction before I even did so. So currently, we just have one agreement with Officer Alcott. And they're, they're usually good for one-year periods, but you know, if, as councilmember Bar noted, you know, if we wanted to next year, if we're concerned around cherry blossom season, for example, and we wanted to make sure that for that week, we get police at certain intersections and on Dorset Avenue to check for, you know, to check for speeding, we would reach out to the county police ahead of time and arrange secondary agreements at, at that point too. So there's, but to answer your original question, no.
No, no, and, and Steve, in terms of, oh, was it you, Rob, in terms of an alternative to the police? Is our thinking that we have no presence of any kind, any security until from the time we terminate this program and have something new, what's our kind of thinking around that? Let, let's say everyone is agreement determining. So the next question is, how do we do it so that we transition to a next set of interventions that are sensible? Or do we, are we saying we don't need any kind of privatized authority?
Well, so just to clarify or elaborate, that's my understanding of Public Safety Committee's recommendation is to rely on the excellent police support and protection we received from the second district, the regular Montgomery County Police Support. So it's not as though we will be undefended or unprotected.
Right, right. And there was also, there was a recent incident in town where the Montgomery County Second District Police responded like that.
Right.
So I think, yeah, and so, so I, I do think that, as, as I've said for so many years, this program was implemented with no guidelines. And it's just sort of been a feel-good thing for the most part, with some instances where it was great that the police happened to be here when somebody had a little problem, like falling or whatever. But I think that, that now is the time to follow the recommendation of the committee to, to end it as it currently exists orally. Done, orally structured, and then to give the council the time to look at all those possible alternatives. And I don't think we're gonna lose any, you know, real, I don't think we're gonna lose public safety because, because we do have, the Montgomery County Police are excellent. So, but it's up to you, it's up, it's up to all of you to decide.
Yeah.
Whenever you decide, I, they respect for, I come to the conclusion that it's time to end.
Yeah, no, no, I, I know we will, we will have to decide, I'm trying to understand the issue, but I think the, so I, I think you're saying that we terminate without having an alternate and that's okay. And we don't believe that will create additional risk in our town in any way whatsoever. That, that your view, Steve. Matt, what's your view on that?
I'll help my view.
I, I, I like anyone's view, I'm just trying to.
He's running this meeting. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Matt, what's your view on that?
I you know, I, I think the Public Safety Committee laid out their justification for why they don't believe that the program is offering additional safety measures for us right now. I, I guess where I agree with that to an ex, where I agree with that is that there aren't really, there aren't really guidelines right now for how the police coverage in town is providing extra safety for us. I think, I think having a police presence can be psychologically beneficial to people to know that police are around. I think that there, there perhaps is some deterrence, but if we're compared to Drummond, which doesn't have something like that, you know, there's no, there's no spike in crime in Drummond where they don't. Now, I, our, it's hard to delineate where Somerset ends and Drummond starts for, you know, a bad guy that's coming in, but I, I think that there are other effective ways that we could improve safety in town other than just continuing on a legacy program. Well, for example, there's actually a state police program that we could look into in, in addition, more targeted patrols and coverage throughout the year. Like I said, cherry blossom season, for example, we have concerns or daylight savings time when there's more dark hours, you know, we could, we could ask for patrols around certain times. And also, I would partially kick it back to the Public Safety Committee to say when, when my coverage or what, you know, what are some of our safety concerns in town? And how, how might, whether it's police coverage or cameras or, you know, private security doing force, you know, those are some of the options that, that would potentially be available to us. I, I don't feel comfortable necessarily endorsing any of those specifically at this point, but those are some options we could look into further.
And financially, what would be the immediate impact? Because we already well past half a point of the fiscal year.
Well, financially, we actually reduced the police budget from last year based in part on
Public Safety Committee.
On, on the recommendations and on also the hours that they had put in last year. So at this point, like I said, we just have one officer that's putting in hours, mainly daytime hours at this point. So.
Like, and because our fiscal year is imminent.
Yes.
So what's the, you have a.
Right, right now, we're at about thirty thousand dollars.
That we've spent.
We've spent, we've budgeted, we've budgeted about thirty-nine thousand dollars.
So we would save nine thousand.
We could save nine thousand dollars.
To finish it before June thirty.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I, I just, I don't think Kumar understands, we might want to go to Kumar. Discuss the recommendations, I want to give you a chance to ask some questions first.
No, I just wanted to say that I'm in total agreement, you know, with, with the Public Safety Committee. I, one of the things that we have not talked about in terms of, you know, we talked about police cars and whatever, but it's really, we have a traffic issue, which is, which is what I think really needs to be addressed, and I think they would say the same thing. I love their idea of renting a traffic counting camera, you know, to see what's really going on on Dorset Avenue. Well, we all have our opinions, you know, but anyway, so I do welcome the discussion to see what, how we will move in the future. I would love to, to not have a security force in the town. We can decide on what the period is, just to see how things go. You know, I think that, 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 that attempted break-in on, on Dorset, you know, a couple of weeks ago, is a perfect example of the help we got. I mean, this place was filled with police cars. You know, they did a great job and so anyway, that's what I'm asking.
Can we open that up for Kumar, just to.
Yeah, thank you. I was actually hearing if you, if town manager could read councilmember Roback's comments to the committee, I mean, to the council.
Well, they've already been shared.
Comments if I could.
I, I'd rather not just re, re for a lot of this to share to all the council members. Do you have something to add to it?
Um, well, yeah, I mean, I thought, first of all, thank you for letting me participate in this. I thought councilmember Roback summed it up really well. From my perspective, there's no deterrent value to this program other than for the benefit of the one or two houses where the police car happens to be parked. And I looked at, and you can look at, you can do this yourself, go to the county police website, look at the crime map, Glen Echo, Garrett Park, whichever neighborhood, whichever neighborhood you look at, we all have roughly the same crime rate, whether we, whether, or whether the neighborhood hires the police or doesn't. If I could just share my screen.
Sorry, Kumar, just, we have a lot to cover, but I can focus the question.
Okay.
What is, what is the vision of the Public Safety Committee for the future, once we've ended this program? Assuming we end, if, if we end this program, what is your vision, Public Safety Committee vision?
The vision of the public safety, well, there's kind of two issues here. One is traffic and pedestrian safety, one is crime prevention, but the vision in either case is that we're gonna continue public education, infrastructure, and other government regulatory and legislative policies to keep the community safe. And just a couple of examples, you're already doing a lot, you've done LED streetlights, you're working on sidewalk safety. There are some actually legislative changes you could make, for instance, soliciting hours for business, you know, people promoting businesses. You know, permitting requirements when it comes to home security surveys for new homes or you know, hardware or software that's needed for new homes. I could go on, but I won't, but.
That, that's excellent. Do, do my colleagues have any, any follow-up questions for the Public Safety Committee?
I, I, it, it, kind of still question, yes. Kumar, do you know, it just occurred to me and I, I, I didn't look it up myself, but maybe you know the answer. How many hours do we get of coverage from regular Montgomery County Police in town?
I mean, it's basically twenty-four hours because all you need to do is call nine-one-one and.
But controls, because you're, you're comparing times, or time spent in Somerset by secondary officers.
Well, I can tell you that the police are about two police dispatch incidents in Somerset every week. So they're coming through here regularly every week, you know, they're obviously, you know, when they come through here, they're going to a specific location, they're gonna be dealing with the person there, and then they're driving through town to get in and out. So as far as actual, you know, whether they come here on their own, just to patrol the town.
But, but also, that, that is, that's information they wouldn't provide. Right, that's. They would, they wouldn't provide how I've been there here. That would be. That, that's like police inside information.
But.
I had a, a, for Mr. Luswani, just a clarification. So if we terminate the program now in the next council meeting, we are saying that there is no gap in coverage because we are covered by county police, second district. And that's good enough, we are gonna rely on the county. As the incident recently that happened demonstrated, anyway, cops are around and we don't need any dedicated town security. Is, is, is the bottom line? I just want to be clear, that's what we're saying.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's the same for Chevy Chase West, Drummond, you know, you could look, any community that doesn't hire the police, we enjoy the same crime rate. And what is really deterring these incidents is people taking precautions, having high-quality locks, locking up their houses and their cars and taking those precautions.
No, I, my, my concern was if we terminate and there isn't an alternate, let's say we terminate and then there's a series of, there's a crime wave in town, and there are residents in town who are clearly, you know, have the view that this means we are more vulnerable to safety incidents, not having the dedicated cops in their minds means we are more vulnerable. And, you know, I think as a council, we probably need to have a point of view that actually what we are, if we decide to terminate the program, we are saying, we're not adding more safety risks. We are saying there is the county police, there's the second district police, that's our view. So if there is, happens to be a crime wave that follows the termination of this program, you know, there is the county police that will be around to take care of it. Right, that would be the, the view that we would all share with those residents in town that have concerns about equating the existence of this program with having some intervention to shore up safety in town.
I mean, I think, I think you have to take it as it comes. I'm skeptical that there would be a crime wave right after you cancel this program because the history shows that that doesn't occur.
No, no, what I'm saying, even if it does happen, even if it does happen, then, then we are saying that the county will respond. This is because we are, our safety is in the common sense.
Right, and I think the two critical issues are, we have to keep up the public education and motivate people to take those precautions. If there were a series of crimes, I think the first thing you need to do is get the second district leadership in here and, you know, get a briefing from them, and you can go from there.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. So my sense is that we have a consensus to move forward with, at least bring this to a vote for closure at March meeting. My, the only caveat suggestion I have is that if we vote on it in March, we shouldn't necessarily and we decide to close it as a courtesy to the police officer who's been working with us, we should give some.
Maybe pull it at the end of June, but decide in March, something like that.
Or, or even sometime in April, but just not that night.
That even the monetary benefit is negligible.
Right.
Which might give us some time, some work for you.
I don't, I don't really think, I don't really think, I think it should be terminated when you take the vote because it's not, you know, this officer, who we all know very well, if he's relying on this income, he'll be able to find, there's a lot of opportunities for secondary employment by these officers.
One of them is retiring.
Well, all got it. But I, I don't think, I don't think he's, I don't think he's gonna have a problem right, right now.
I mean, I haven't, I haven't talked.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
I mean, I should ask Steve's view, just as, you know. From his perspective. But I'm not sure it needs to be more than two weeks or a month, but I see something that's not just dramatic.
But I mean, the whole point of it is, I understand it's up to you, but you're ending it because we're not getting any value for the dollar. So, so we don't need, we don't need to worry about, you know, we can help, if he, if he really needs the work, we'll help him find something somewhere else. But, but I, it doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's nice that you're concerned about him, but I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
And, and, and that's.
That's okay.
So it's up to you.
Before we go on it, can I just tell one story about something else we can do in town that's new, which is that federal guidelines have just changed to allow art as a method of slowing traffic in town. And this is paintings on intersections by artists, I hasten to add, that because drivers slow over them, that actually works to slow traffic. And we could do art based on the school that, 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 while we, um, Dorset intersection, maybe. So there, what is there creative things we can do, is what I'm saying.
Which, which is excellent, I'll look forward to this.
I had a quick.
It's still, but I was worried about distracted drivers looking at me.
That's a great painting. This is just on the road.
Okay, great, let's move on to the next topic, the anti-Semitism resolution. And we do have in our packet a letter from a resident about it.
Okay, let me, let me practice this again, yeah, okay. So just to refresh everyone's memory, the reason that this topic got introduced was because the town of Chevy Chase, under the leadership of Mayor Lee, they passed a resolution specifically to address the rise of anti-Semitism and M C P S. And when they, when they passed it, they also, the council added that it should be pass, it should, they, they wanted to encourage all the other municipalities to consider passing a similar resolution. So when this was brought up at a work session, I think the count, and, and I think that night, there were some residents made comments that it should be expanded to include Islamophobia, homophobia, everything else. And there was, then you all had discussion, and then councilmember Kumar decided to introduce this anti-Semitism resolution so that the discussion could, could begin. So, and, and I think, and also one of the directors from the council was that, that the Equity Inclusion Committee would weigh in on this. And the Equity Inclusion Committee right now is a little bit dysfunctional. And I was trying to get them to have a meeting, it would be called by, by our representative, I guess that hasn't taken place.
No, it hasn't.
So, so what I would say that, given that there isn't a lot of urgency, I mean, I realize it's an urgent topic, but, but it, it's up to you whether you want to move forward on this resolution specifically standalone, or if you want to wait till there's some input from citizens, or, or if somebody wants to introduce another resol, you know, something else. It's, it's really up to you, but I just wanted to bring you up to date on where we stand now. And, and my view on it is, whatever you end up doing to address these these, these problems, it's all good. Whether you do it standalone or, or individually, you're all together.
It is all good. Matt, can you remind the council what the council approved like last summer? It was, I can't remember if it was a county resolution or it was one of the council member resolutions at the county level, there was some anti-Semitism letter that we are you, what, did we have it signed on to, or we accepted, we?
Yeah, as I recall, that came from the, the town of Chevy Chase.
About a year, about a year ago.
That also came from the town of Chevy Chase, right, last year.
Yeah, so that was, there, there was a resolution attached to that and then a, a draft action plan of events that they, they recommended municipalities consider, but yeah, we did. I can share the resolution on, on your screen that was adopted. It was March of last year.
It was, yeah. I just think it was last summer. Okay, that's great, thank you. That's very pretty to pull it up. So I just wanted to go back to that because I, I think that our neighbor's comment is, is well taken, there are a number of issues and we've we've taken one standard position against on, on anti-Semitism. And I, I personally am fine with this. And I, I personally am fine with this, this fresh one, because I think that is, it is a problem. But there are other problems too, so I look forward to your comments, my colleagues, on what's a recommended path forward to be timely, effective, and provide fair and meaningful commentary.
Yeah, really, I think the Equity Inclusion Committee should have a, a go at it. Um, and so we can get them to meet. I think there there are two points to to make here. One is the the resolution itself. Mentions all religious institutions and violence against all religious institutions already, but then it flips back to antisemitism again. And so it kind of goes back and forth between all and antisemitism, and it could be improved so it has a a more complete focus. The other side of it, and again, this is the the Equity Inclusion Committee, but I just want to point out that some critics of antisemitism resolutions say that you're anti-Israel when you do an antisemitism resolution. And it's clearly annoying that they do it because there is no intent to be anti-Israel in in this resolution. It is about religious bigotry and only religious bigotry that that resolution are about. But if we can word it so that it clearly isn't anything to do with Israel, then it would make it better too. So I mean, something like if you move to the version, who let strong anti-Semitism and add and all religious bigotry. And you know you're referring only to religious bigotry and antisemitism there. But I said that, that's the sort of thing I want discussed by the Equity Inclusion Committee, you know, it's too fine grained for us.
But I'd share your comments about the first thing I could do. See, we're sorry, I shouldn't be pointing.
In no, in terms of this resolution, which I think we introduce through council. I'm I'm in favor of adopting that because it's very specific from our neighboring mayor. It's tied to incidents. Frankly, at that time, at at a synagogue, at a school, seems completely reasonable for us to be able to say that it's absolutely unacceptable. I think, you know, in the context of introducing this, we had, I think it was Rohit who said, look, you know, what about Islamophobia? Both antisemitism and you know, statements against Jewish people and statements against folks that might have ties to Palestinian people have risen. And there's a lot of hatred online. I don't know what it is in our town. I think it's hard to gauge. Uh, but they have risen. So to the extent that we can make another resolution that reflects this moment in time, a broader commitment. I think we should do that and we should introduce that. And to the extent that our diversity of really, really friends are able to draft something like that for us, that would be awesome. But I think we can also do it or either you can help us or, you know, we can pull something together. That would be my orientation is that, one, we should adopt this because it was from our neighboring town. It was tied to specific incidents. I think it absolutely makes sense to do that. As I said at that time, it doesn't mean that we are not against other forms of hatred, obviously not. But at the same time, we had someone specifically asked us about these other forms of hatred. And so to the extent that we can address that, we can do that in a new resolution. There's absolutely, you know, no harm in doing that. I think that in terms of, I I think Steve, you maybe you are alluding to this. This kind of stuff, sadly, we will be doing this a lot. It's just, it sucks, but we will be doing this a lot. The moment is different from last summer. It's just, we will keep, what what else can we do? Other than express our frustration and dismay at what's going on. But I mean, in that sense, we can pass a hundred resolutions. I have no issue.
I think the problem is religious bigotry. Yeah, and it's taking a particular form at the moment. Over time, hundreds, thousands of years. I think we've got to refer to all religious bigotry in the resolution. And even if we do a separate Islamophobia one, it's the same, it's it's thing. We've got sort of all of it to pick it because that is the fundamental point. But again, I think that is something that the Equity Inclusion Committee is good at and they can, they can develop long as we can get them to meet. Yes.
We should hear from them.
All right, I'm sitting on the wrong side of the table.
He's also looking.
I don't mind going last. It's all right. It's kind of interesting to hear what I'll speak. Um, a couple of things, when I agree with everyone that this, this is something that if we could have an active Equity Collision Inclusion Committee, this would definitely, I think, bounce to them, number one. Number two, I just want to stress, let us not put antisemitism and Israel in the same sentence. They are two separate things. Antisemitism has been around for as long as I can remember. And unfortunately, and longer, and unfortunately, in our county, it is rampant.
Yeah.
I looked at the police statistics and they are amazing. If there are ten, eight of them are anti-Semitic things. Yes, and but, and yes, there's a little bit of everybody else, but just a little bit interesting when you're not. There's always going to be bigotry. There's always going to be another, you know, put whatever label you want on it. But so I would love the committee to really address this. But the other thing I wanted to say is I agree that Mayor Wayne has asked us to do this. And I think we should join forces with our neighbor. Um, because I think it's important to just join forces with our neighbor where it's, where where it's not just for anything. But this is a good thing. So I would love to see us do.
Well, it's been intro, it's been introduced. So if three of you want to put it on the the purpose tonight is if three of you want to put it on the agenda for March, then you put on the agenda.
So I say one more thing. In in response to the Kahanas, um, heartfelt, you know, uh, weather. You know, I get it. You know, I I think I think it was beautifully written and 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 all that, but I just think this should be a standalone. So that and I would both to bring it to, bring it to our next meeting.
I would support that, you know, if anyone else, but but I think it's a good idea to for all the reasons that you mentioned. But I would say that we can, because we have the fact of the matter is the other two are outstanding, but also happening. To the extent we can condemn that, we should. And that's, and 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 moreover, uh, uh, neighbor and residents asked us to, and as I was saying, really, this not hurt in any way. This is not controversial. We can condemn these facts. If we can do two hundred resolutions, let's do that. It's not a big deal.
And I'm ready to to support moving forward and for a number of reasons, largely because it's, it's a reasonable position to take. There's just, there are other positions that we can and should take. And we as a council also agree on having our town manager work on drafting something that's
I'm happy to.
Would be a corollary, not not to hold this up.
I'm happy to have dropped it. We can, we can introduce that in the next meeting.
That'd be good. I just want to get that rolling too, because
I agree.
I've worked with the mayor for at least, I think, two months now on Mercy.
I also think these issues, you know, I have a philosophical issue with the D E I committees. I mean, this is an issue we should all care about. You know, so we can draft it and we can introduce it.
So so you're saying that you want to
We will adopt this resolution.
So you want to put that on?
And we'll put another into resolution.
And then you're gonna, you're gonna work with Matt to draft something, you're gonna introduce.
At the next time. And I've shared it with all of you before. I know where.
You don't want to wait for the Equity.
I think we really should try to get that.
Well, I'll task you with that. I will, I will get them dropped out.
Council member has the right to introduce some. Right. So you can, so introduce it. We can share it with the
Yes, I mean, I mean, I'm trying to. If you can launch them, ensure it and crop and improve the language.
I'm sure that what you do, which will satisfy everybody, I think. So if councillor Kumar works with Matt to draft something that he introduces, then it can be referred to the committee, because I'm sure we can get it
Perfect. Let's do it.
In the next two months. And so they can make comments and then, and then and then, of course, when it's on the council for approval, just like so so now if you're gonna put the antisemitism on the March agenda, that means that the public, your citizenry will be able to comment. And they can say, I don't want you to do it. Then you can decide.
Agreed. That's fine. But we can move it forward.
That's the beauty of the process. That's why we have a great, beautiful process here that encourages public participation.
Okay.
Great discussion. Thank you all. Tree code discussion is the next item. Is this?
That was, I asked about.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Yeah.
Do you want to make this a closed session?
I think, I think I can keep it general enough that we don't have to, but if the discussion goes that way, then
Well, Ron will be listening. Our town attorney will be listening and if the conversation goes in the wrong direction, you will then speak up and we will go into executive session.
Out of intrigue, I'm excited.
I'll, I'll wait until they've seen it again.
But before you start, maybe, uh, the town attorney could outline what are the parameters for the discussion. So then the councillor bar will not fall into the, into the swamp.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So i- if we want to talk about confidential legal advice, we can go into closed session. If we just want to talk about from a policy standpoint, what we should and consider with respect to the criteria for tree removals, I think that's fine for open session. And we but as you said, Mr. Mayor, I'll, you know, monitor the discussion and if it's, it seems like we're getting into issues where we might want to give confidential legal advice, then I can, I can let you know. But I think council member Barr, and I don't want to speak for him, thought it might be helpful to talk about the purposes in general of the the tree removal ordinance. The criteria that is used to decide a decision and whether that criteria should be expanded or contracted. And to make sure we're all on the same page as to the purposes and intents and how the law should be applied.
Without mentioning any specific case, right?
Absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Councillor Law is well, I'm I'm confident that he will. Yeah. Not divert us into the swamp.
And I think we've been having difficulty multiple times with tree criteria and that's why I'm doing this. So the, the first criterion, aggregating, aggravating factor against removal is the following, the language exactly. Desirability preserving any tree because of its age, species, size, or outstanding qualities such as uniqueness, rarity, or state of the landmark, or species specimen. We're having difficulty with that. Clearly having difficulty with it. What I suggest well, we, we, we seem
We as an
We, we, the council are having difficulty with.
With this phrase?
With that language, yes.
Do you repeat that?
Desireability, desirability preserving any tree because of its age, species, size, or outstanding qualities such as uniqueness, rarity, or state of the landmark, or species specimen.
Against removal. Okay.
All right. What I'm suggesting is that we ask P N R C to expand upon that term. We include their advice on canopy trees, on the mental trees, forest edge trees. So that we have more clarity about ourselves, so that we can discuss it and decide ourselves.
I think we should go in the closed session because I will struggle to follow without specifics. So there's, I I think there's a case in your mind, yeah.
I can multiply.
So we'd be good to talk about at least one or two of them.
But I can go.
Anchor this, which I suspect we're going to go into a closed session.
You can go into closed session to get legal advice. You cannot go into closed session to discuss any pending applications. If, or applications that you're anticipating.
These are not pending up.
I can go back to, if you want, fifty five oh six trend, I think it was, to give an example where the, uh, Highland Stormwater House. I think that was the first one, but it was those two cherry trees there and, um, one of them had to be removed because the gas lines were there and the moving driveway to protect the other cherry tree.
I remember that.
Was a slipper and we, we had a struggle over it and there was no doubt about that. What I'm saying is that
You're saying that the code did not protect the cherry tree.
What I'm saying is that the code is unclear at the moment on how much protection cherry trees should have. That's the issue.
In cherry trees in general or those
Well, they're
Using those
Using those, this cry, there was cherry trees that came up. So it is how much protection cherry trees have given this code. That's the issue. Last one thing, we should go back in R C and ask them clarify, give us suggestions on canopy trees and ornamental, which cherry trees are ornamental or forest edge trees, which are like dog. Uh, and and give us their, their own recommendations so that we can build the code on that. Improve.
I'm not a hundred percent following. I'm sorry. Maybe others are.
Well, well, maybe, maybe, uh, the town attorney can interpret that a little bit further.
Oh, yeah, I I think the the question is what would be perhaps the underlying policy for this tree protection ordinance? You can decide the scope of it. Is it meant to protect what one might call canopy trees, which provide recognized environmental benefits because of the size of their canopies, this CO two they capture, the environment they provide for birds. That's Rob, Robin can speak to it better than I. Or do you also want to just regulate and preserve all trees, including what mu- one might define as ornamental trees?
Got it.
And and you know, sometimes we even talk about shrubs in this ordinance and you know, is there also the similar desire to protect shrubs?
Or Yeah, I mean, there's a separate dimension too, which is that native trees are, um, most canopy trees are native trees usually, and they are bug friendly. In other words, our native bugs lay eggs on them. And that's what feeds birds. It's trying to help me. Isn't that wonderful? Non-native trees and the cherry, the ornamental cherry trees are not native. There are, we do have some native trees. Do not have any bugs associated with them.
I appreciate what you're saying. I think, I think to answer your question, Ron, I think if you remember, originally there wasn't sufficient protection for trees of a certain size in the code. Right? And I think they were, they covered canopy tree, but mostly sort of mature trees, older trees. You know, even there was even the terminology of champion trees, trees that have been around for a long time. That may have been a sort of fixture of that property, fixture of that street. And the court did not have sufficient protection. So what we have now, that's the underlying policy goal of what we have now in the code. I think if we have a desire to go even further and protect trees that might not strictly follow that definition because they have other perceived value, like those cherry trees at that property, then we should talk about that, definitely. But that would be an evolution or shift. I think that's what you're intimidating, Ron, in our underlying policy objective on that front. I think it gets harder to define it. It gets harder to define. If you want full coverage of trees, it gets harder to define shrub. It just gets harder to fortify. Uh, I suspect, but but if that's the direction we want to take, we should definitely investigate that. Um, I think it's, it's just a harder thing to fortify and harder thing to implement, I suspect. I think that's what you're saying, right? To go beyond the current protections the code provides to canopy and mature trees to all trees so that we could actually use the code and and say to someone like at that trench street up the street from you, Steve, to say, no, those two cherry trees are protected, clearly in the language of the code, correct?
Yes. Um, that's what I'm trying to say. Um, and get P N R C's help because it was they who developed these factors, so.
Because the policy, when we get tasked them, originally a policy paradigm was, hey, no, that we don't have sufficient protection even for these mature trees. And the trees have been unable for, it gave us protect those because that there's consensus and it's easy to implement. I think the question is, do we want to go further? My understanding is there are practical implications of that, but I, I obviously am hoping to figure it out.
I, I too would like the, the um. P and R C.
Art of National.
Thank you.
P N R C.
A lot of, a lot of acronyms, um, I, I would love to see what, what they noodle out and want to suggest for us. Um, and I'm not saying that we buy it, but it gives us a basis to debate it because. Trees are very emotional in this town, and I think we have to be careful. On, you know, we have to protect them, but we also have to give people leeway to take a tree down if they hate it, or. Or they want to do something on their property, so I, I know it's very tricky, I got called out when I went to put my, my solar panels on. Holbert didn't know, that's what I was doing, and he suggested a canopy tree from front of my house. And I said to him, I can't, you can't do that, I just put up thirty thousand dollars worth of, of um. You know, solar panels, and he said to me, I never would have suggested that tree, and I know. But I got a call from someone at the P N R C who said, don't I care about the environment in the community? And I was like, I think solar panels really help care about the community, but it was, was that kind of thing, it was so emotional on, on her part. And um, so, anyway, I mean, I got it.
Well, well, that, 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 to be true, if I may say, uh, with a jump, the line, but there are two different. Implications, and one is existing trees.
Right.
That are thirty, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, hundred years old, what do we do about that? And then there's like, what is, what should we recommend as new planting, yeah?
My, my point was, it was an emotional decision.
Agreed, the, the policy behind this, if I remember correctly, now it's two years ago, two and a half years ago, was, was the first bucket. Like the trees that are, the canopy trees, the old, that are already planted, already exist, that are fixtures, that everyone kind of agrees. Even the person potentially proposing to cut it is like, oh, I'm not sure I should be doing this.
Right.
That was the, I think, the policy imperative behind that originally, if I remember correctly, right, man?
Well, one, another, another distinction is the P N R, the, the tree code amendment that we adopted before was specific to the removal of trees. Whereas a lot of these are, I think. What Councilmember Barr is specifically referring to is in the context of construction.
Yes.
And trees that. Are, you know, could, could be removed over during the course of construction and/or to what extent we. Require the tree to be maintained during construction and that.
Okay.
The, a design, the house needs to be built around existing trees.
Okay, so this is during construction, what do we do? And please, okay.
Maybe it's all different sections, we have a construction, we have a planting, we, we have a, I just hate my tree section, you know, I, I.
That was something to shut. Well, I actually, I have to say that, this is aside, you know, just a flag, and I've mentioned this before. We don't actually sufficiently regulate the construction process. In our code, I think there isn't just the whole management of the construction process. Uh, we regulate permitting, the conditions for permitting, but not what happens during. Construction, so this is something to, to bring up, because often our challenges emerge during the construction process.
We do have code on that.
But it seems inadequate, is my understanding, but just wanted to plug.
Yes, I think point ready sample is partial, so. We'll just have to provide a party plan, but I see it violating a routine one. And there's no real. Mechanism or process to.
If we want to expand this code to include what you're saying, man, more clarity and specificity. Specificity during the construction process, like, hey, the root systems are in the lines or whatever. And, you know, we have to redo all the lines underground, so we have to remove this tree. What do we do in the base of that, if that requires clarification? I think we should definitely tighten that. If you are saying additionally that ornamental trees and trees that don't necessarily have a clear defined historic value need to be defined. Further in the code, we should probably look into that. I mean, I'm, I'm open for, for that investigation.
No, I'm good.
We should get P N R C's opinion on it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so, like, they might say, hey, the code is pretty good.
They need to give us a framework.
Yeah, but they might say, we, we, we have, you know, if you're going to ask the P N R C to strengthen the tree code, they will be very excited to do that. Just want you to keep that in mind.
But we will strengthen the code.
No, no, this was their recommendation.
Yeah, this was their. So if I understand this correctly, Ron, your. The, the, the genesis behind your request. Here in your description of it is, well, that's the council to request. That the P N R C review the code. And make recommendations as they.
In the context of the difficulties we've had.
Exactly.
But to, to be very, whenever you say, I get a little, it becomes a little vague, Robin, but I think what, what we are saying is these two. If I was to summarize, it's construction. Which, correct, man, and then ornament, is that right? Well.
Ornament is already.
So, so for example. I, I think, I think one, one, one aspect of the code is, um, I can also.
I, I'm just saying, if it's fine, you don't need to believe with this, but it would be good to, I'm still not a hundred percent clear on what the, what the buyer.
Okay, I'll try to be a little bit clearer, but I think most of us have it, which is that. For construction, there are occasions when trees have to be removed. And we use criteria for permit decisions as stated in our code. And the code one, which I've read several times, is the current language that allows us to decide on the value of a tree.
Yes.
And it clearly is not helping us sufficiently because of the difficulties we are experiencing, so I'm saying. Let's give it P N R C see if they can sharpen it for us, recommendations to us, so that we can have a clearer code that will help us, that's it.
I agree. So. Mr. Mayor, it ac- actually might be a good idea to go into closed session, maybe just for a few minutes, I can provide some.
Yeah.
Legal advice.
So, so beyond, beyond that, what I wanted to say is. Uh, wouldn't it be good, also, Mr. Town Attorney, if the. You or the staff research to see if there's any. Language that other, that are in other towns' codes that um. Address the question of Councilor of Law about more specific. Says, because there, there must be some boilerplate language that has been, that is used successfully, isn't that possible?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, certainly possible, we can do that.
So is that, is that?
Yeah, that would help, yeah, I mean, but I think P N R C should also wait.
Of course, would they, the committee's always. Okay, so I think uh, would someone like to make a motion to go into uh?
Make the motion to go into closed session.
To obtain, yeah, pursuant to three, three oh five B seven, to obtain legal advice regarding the towns. What is the name of our ordinance, it is? Uh. Chapter one eighty-two.
One eighty-two, seven.
One eighty-two, seven, yes, criteria for permit decisions, thank you, Matt.
I think that's what I said.
Okay, there's a second, right, okay, all this. Thank you, so all you need to do is, uh, any.
Citizen. Yeah, uh, I'll just briefly put you back in the waiting room, um. And then um, once we enter back into the open session, I'll, uh, of course, like, let you all back in, thank you. In advance, care of patience.
And there's nobody in the, in the town hall, Mr. Town Attorney? Okay, so now we're in executive session, Mr. Town Attorney.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so yeah, it's what I just wanted to mention, or these, these two, this is Doug Lowmeyer that's in the meeting with us.
Yeah, yeah, that's Doug.
Okay. So, yeah, what, what advice I couldn't give on the, the public record is. Yeah. The council will need to decide, frankly, whether or not this code is intended to protect ornamental trees. Ordinarily, in my experience, these types of ordinances protect canopy trees. In the town of Chevy Chase code, for example, expressly only applies to canopy trees. And the reason. Or perhaps a reason is. Because Dillon Rule applies, and we're a municipality, we only can exercise that authority given to us by the state. With respect to prohibiting the removal of trees on private property, the authority is pretty limited. The Maryland law that most rely on for this type of ordinance. Is a provision in the Natural Resources Article, which provides that municipalities may have a tree save program. So we can. Arguably prevent the removal of trees on private property as part of our tree save program. But as a, you know, tree save program typically addresses natural resources like canopy trees. It, it may, the authority may be less clear for ornamental trees or shrubs. So I just wanted to, to point that out, and again, typically, these types of regulations are meant to, meant to protect natural resources, canopy trees. Not necessarily ornamental trees that provide aesthetic value, but really no great environmental value.
All right, thank you.
Question for Ron, is there a specific case where this is implicated right now? Since we are in.
There, there is, yes, yeah, last, last, we can't talk about the merits, but.
Okay.
A, a case was continued, and it, you know, it involves a cherry tree. Ornamental cherry tree, and council's going to have to. Well, yeah, I don't want to talk about the merits, but.
So.
That, that framed this issue.
So, Mr. Town Attorney, any questions that a council member has right now about that specific case? They can ask it at the hearing, right?
Sure, yeah, and you, you can ask me for legal advice about the case, we can't deliberate on the merits. You can ask Matt factual questions.
But wouldn't you surmise that any questions that council members have right now about any specific case? They can ask, they're free to ask it at the hearing of you.
Correct, yes.
Good question. It's just because the other.
Do trees?
But, yeah, before we get to that, before we get to that hearing, I think it was. Yeah, helpful for us to try and get on the same page as to whether our ordinance covers ornamental trees or not. Frankly.
Understood, understood.
Are there two categories of trees? You know, canopy trees and everything else is an ornamental tree?
No.
No.
There are, there are multiple different kinds of trees, I, that's why I use three to start off with, I mean, that, that, there are.
Cherry is an ornament.
There, there, there are forest edge trees, which are native trees that are not canopy trees, uh, dogwoods are a forest edge tree that. Uh, magnolia is just a weird tree, that neither a forest tree nor, so there are other kinds of trees.
Okay.
No, but just for, to, you know, the shortcut on this is that the cherry is an ornament.
Okay.
Um, okay, well, we can understand the merits, do we have any legal questions? Well, uh, Ron, what, you mentioned one town and their underlying policy. Do they specify language there that makes it clear that is missing in our code? Uh, right?
Yeah, I was pulling, pulling it up right now. So the town of Chevy Chase code provides, this chapter applies to the following trees on private and public property. Canopy tree, a canopy tree is defined as a tree with a trunk that measures at least twenty-four inches in circumference at four and one-half feet above the ground. And is one of the following species, and then they have a list of maybe sixty species.
Understood, and don't we in our code have also with? Parameter? And wouldn't that cover all trees that fall under that with parameters?
Well.
Because it's width, it's got nothing to do with it.
But it's, it's not specific to one tree though, either, it's, it's two, it, it's a.
Is it two, is it, does it automatically exclude ornamental trees because it's too big of a?
No, 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 no.
Okay, then it doesn't apply, so is that with criteria, are, are we saying is, is too generous?
This, this isn't, this isn't about width, okay? This is about the nature of the tree.
But so if it, if it was a, if it was a sampling, you would have the same desire to preserve it?
Yes.
If it, okay, well, then we have a major philosophical.
Now, it, I mean, it, look.
They, I believe to be, you're correct, that our code. Specifies that if you're planning to remove more than so many inches worth of tree.
Yes.
Without specifying those trees.
Yes.
Not even necessarily specifying the number of trees, just if you're planning to remove more than. I don't know, forty-eight inches, eighteen inches, you need a permit from the town.
Understood.
And then the, then the council decides whether or not we'll allow them to remove those trees.
Yes, and are we, so my, then, Steve, my question is, is that, are we saying that that is not sufficient anymore? And it's not working for us in the case of this, or are we saying that it doesn't help us then decide? Because all it does is sets up the request for a permit, correct?
Right, in one way, it just sets up the request for the permit.
Yeah, it, it particularly, the thing is between administrative decisions, which is made only by. The mayor and manager versus the decision that comes to council, so when the, there's more tree involved, it comes to council.
Got it, okay, so, so we are saying, and then. What are we saying that is not working in, in?
Yeah, let me, let me take a stab at, a stab at that, really, I, I, again, I think the issue is. Is the town code aimed at canopy trees that provide. Environmental benefits? Or is it also broad enough to include any types of tree, including ornamental? My legal opinion is, it wasn't really meant to cover ornamental. And if you look at the factors weighing against removal, first you look at, is this tree particularly desirable? Because of its age, species, size, or outstanding qualities such as uniqueness, rarity, or status as a landmark or species specimen? So for example, if we had a tulip poplar and, and. The arborist said, this is the only one in town, so it is a unique species, you know, that's a factor you'd weigh, and then the second factor is, if removal. Would subject the town to environmental degradation, which you probably, you can't demonstrate with removal of an ornamental tree.
Yes. Well, what I can say, may, may I say one quick statement, having been involved in the P N R C, the draft thing of that code two and a half years ago. The intent was a hundred percent canopy, protection of canopy tree, now. What I'm also going to say, if, if we want to change it, we can, but I'll also say that I doubt we're going to be able to change it before the next hearing. On this specific issue, so just keep that in mind. But if we want to get into a process to tighten it further, we can, but the intention was, as the language intimates. Was really, there was no real protection, there was a process that was not working. It was to kind of take it forward and make it, there's some protection and a, and a process that's working. Now, if you want to strengthen that further, we can, but I, I can, I'm pretty confident from being involved closely at that time, that the intent was canopy. To answer your question.
But it is not in the language, and what I'm saying is that we should put it in the language, but if I want to hear from P N R C. Explicitly in the context of what would be needed.
Right, so it sounds like we're. So we, this is going to.
Oh, yeah, we, we could end the closed session now, I, yeah, I think that's legal advice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we can have a motion to, open, is your motion to end the closed session?
Yes.
Right, so.
Approved.
Yes, over.
Okay, yeah, we're back, we're back in business.
Thank you.
You lost.
So we get the code. P N R C. So, so the council is in agreement to request the P N R C to. Review the current code language with regards to. Trees and requirements or considerations for tree removal and to make recommendations as, as appropriate in, in response to.
If, if we could give them more.
And, and rather than that, we.
I think we should say, if you would like clarification, whether it applies to ornamental trees.
We can do that too.
That would be, that would be the right.
Mm-hmm.
Direction to take it, I, I, I just want to caution them, it took some, it took many years to get to that point two and a half years ago. As Debbie intimated, it's a very passionate issue, we have a pretty functional, generally functional tree code. We can, we can take a monkey wrench to it, but it will, it will become another emotional issue that might drag on for another few years.
There is a danger of that.
But I didn't, we, we'd want sort of immediate purposes either.
But we'll get it started, so thank you for bringing that to council's attention, Ron. Building my courage, this is. In a continuation of, of topic, the, the general. In a continuation of, of topic, the, the general topic of building code revisions. And perhaps, and I think Shannon has expressed this, that even with what we've done. If I can speak for Shannon here and myself, the. The resulting new homes being, right, being built. And permits being requested for it are still having greater impact on the landscape than. Was our desire or intention with what we've done today, so.
Throw me in on.
Okay, so we're looking, maybe we should do something more, and Matt, just a brief background here, Matt has some experience. With other towns, um, with, with a slightly different approach to lot cover.
So. Yeah, so, I mean, there's. I guess, I guess my question is. How with? We, we just did building height, right? That's. Fairly. That's fairly easy enough to define in terms of. What the height of the building is and to then try to determine. What it's easy enough to do a, a survey of the town and, and, you know, the, the process that we follow for that. Set regulations based on what we find, what we feel is appropriate. For building lot, there's a number of different ways we can attack it. There's a number of different ways to look at it and I, I. I think maybe just some discussion and some guidance on what kind of our. Goal is on it, um, could help me to. Put together maybe a proposal on how to move forward with it if we hire. You know, an engineering company to do a survey of the town. It'll be very expensive, but there, that's. Probably the only way to get the same type of information in terms of what lot coverage is around town. Yeah, the, I think the concern is. How large houses are impacting, um, other, other properties, um. There's some. It's sort of tied into the stormwater stuff, but I, I think some of that is. Some of that is. Addressed by stormwater, um, so I. All that's to say is, you know, the county right now has a restriction on lot sizes that are allowed. The town doesn't. And so when we veer into talking about a house being too, too big. There's no, there's no legal basis for that in our just town code. There's just, there's just nothing there. So, so figuring out a way. If, if that is something we want to talk about, then, you know, how, how do we move forward and what is our vision for that?
Right, so this is just the beginning of discussion. And maybe it won't be very long discussion, because there's no other, not much interest or appetite for it, but if there is, we can keep going, David.
You, you might wanna see if Ron. Explain what the, you know, what the, what the limitations are. Is it, is that fair?
The limitations with respect.
What, what the town has the authority to regulate in terms of.
Lot. Sure, yeah, so under land use article of the Maryland code, section twenty-five oh nine, we have the authority to regulate. The setbacks of structure, which we do, structures which we do. Height, massing, design elements, lot coverage, including impervious surface coverage. So what Matt has questioned here in the memo. Lot coverage percentages, certainly that's something you could regulate. As Matt notes in the memo. You have requirements for accessory structures, but, you know, not. Main buildings and often during permit reviews, we'll ask Doug, does this meet? You know, county lot coverage requirements, but you could consider having your own. And in addition to setbacks and lot coverage percentages, you can also regulate other things. To limit the apparent mass and scale of properties. Some other jurisdictions in the area, for example, will regulate wall plane length. And height and wall plate height. So wall plane length, for example. Is the length of a continuous wall plane before an interruption. So in the, in the town of Chevy Chase, for example, in Martin's additions, I think there's a. Wall plane length requirement of thirty-five feet to forty feet. Without an offset, that's at least two by five feet. And the reason they wanna encourage those offsets is because it breaks up the continuous wall plane. And helps break up the apparent mass of structures. So there's all types of. Those zoning or not zoning, sculpting tools to limit the actual or apparent size of houses.
Okay, so wouldn't you say that that is a very powerful tool? That the council has, and can you also explain to us? What are the arguments against that, which, doing that, which I think come from. You know, the, the economics of it.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I can tell you as I witnessed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as I witnessed firsthand, when the town of Chevy Chase, Chevy Chase Village, Martin's additions. Went through their comprehensive zoning rewrites or building regulation rewrites after the Maryland law was amended in two thousand six. In response to a request from the town of Chevy Chase to help them address mancination. It can be a very divisive topic. There are some residents who. Don't want any restrictions on the size of their houses because that impacts potentially resale value. And, um. Yes, it's, um, perhaps oddly, you know, I also remember testimony by a few residents saying. We want restrictions because we don't want houses to become too valuable, because. Taxes are going up and I can't afford to live here anymore. So all types of issues on. Both sides of the equation to, to consider and, you know, as a result. I think it's fair to say in all three of those communities, the councils aimed at reaching a middle ground. You know, a compromise to address all the issues of concern. Because you will hear potentially from folks on both sides of the, of the issue.
Okay, and another tool that is available. Uh, is the historic designation tool. And wouldn't that serve also to limit? Can, can that be used to limit lot coverage?
I believe, I believe so, Mr. Mayor, but I'm not, I'm not sure about that exactly. I mean, that, that definitely. Limits what changes you can make to existing historic properties, does any addition.
Because I remember, you know, in the past, for the benefit of the council. Members that haven't been engaged for as long as I have. I, I know that there was a suggestion years ago that if we designated the entire town as historic. That it could possibly address some of the concerns people have about. Because, because I think that, and, and, and maybe we can have the, the staff, um. Get some more information on this, but I think that if a house is historically designated. That you can't change what it, you know, what we're really concerned about is the appearance, right? And, and so if it was, and, and you know, there's an argument to say that this is an example of a classic mid-century development. The new Somerset, particularly, even though half of the houses in New Somerset have been torn down. But anyway, if you wanted to designate as a store, I think that would, I think the streetscape would still. You, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to build, you can probably build back. But I don't think you could, could make the street, the, the, uh. The appearance of the house from the front looked different, isn't it? It's no way.
It, it needs to at least be reviewed by.
Yeah, so, so.
By the H P C.
So that also could be a very controversial option, because I think Chevy Chase Village. I think Chevy Chase Village did their historic designation in pieces.
Yes, there are only certain portions of, of Chevy Chase.
Yeah, and so I think, I think the first piece was done, and then people that were gonna be affected with the second piece. Were against it because of what they saw as, you know, the limits. That happened with the first piece. So, anyway, this is all really, I'm so glad that you put this on the agenda, this is really. Important information for you all to consider as you think about what changes you might want to make.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Ron? Yeah, I mean, there are other things we can do. I mean, first of all, we've done some things already. You think from the neighbor's perspective, okay? One of the things we've done is stormwater, okay, codes, and we, we do that a whole lot better now. So that we are really removing problems when we approve finally a stormwater management problem. Plan because they are doing better than the house before it. So we actually are really helping there. Another one which came from, uh, fifty-five twenty-two Graystone, uh. Which is, when it, the height, it gets enormously. Tall and completely overshadows a neighbor. That's a problem and we've addressed that. We've, we've now got height restrictions and we've done that too, so. We're looking at particular problems and addressing them. I think that's a better way to go. Than trying to regulate overall size where we do get into a whole lot of argument. One other point is. We could make it even easier to put a floor on on top of, of the nineteen fifty's ranch, um, than we already do. Uh, we do make it easier. I do not need to, um, have even, uh. It put, uh, putting a floor up, you don't need a stormwater, and it's a platform. Okay, because there's no exit, so we already are making it easier in that respect. Can we make it even easier in some ways to do that? Because that is ecologically hugely better than building a new home. Um, and would be a good thing to do and also keep the size down at the same time.
Mayor, I think it's worth investigating. But I think the, what I might suggest is you may wanna start with. Where you see the right ratio of lot coverage, the ground, all of us. Because I think everyone's sense of what is a big house is different. So it would be good, like, you saying, look, look, these three volumes, I think the ratios sense is wide. And kind of if we have that as a baseline, so we can all align and say, well, actually that makes sense. We agree with you. Will be my suggestion to kind of do this, because I think it starts with what is the vision for the right size? For the town, like, and I can say from personal experience, we deliberately wanted a certain size, in part because. We didn't want a house to look weirder on the lot. Just like it just doesn't fit, but there are homes that do look out of sense, but that's not big for some folks. Right, so I, I want us to kind of align on what is, what that is, and that would be my request back to you, is that if we investigate, it might be worth. You specify, or Shannon, or like, this is what we think is the right ratio, that's what. At the same time, I totally agree with Jeffrey. I think we should, maybe we can have a separate investigation on the historical designation. I have found there are many, many, many benefits of that for our town. It doesn't take away the fact that there would be renovations of new homes. Uh, I, and I do think it, it might provide other benefits to our town. To be, for be designated as far as possible as a sort of town. So it's definitely worth investigating. I think to Jeffrey's point, I think it's challenged. Because already that section of the town has gone through our turn over. So it might be already too late. But I think it's worth investigating, and I think we definitely have legitimate claims to certain sections. There are rows of homes that. Really belong to a certain architectural side. And to be honest with you, it is an indirect win. I think that's what Jeffrey was trying to get at. To get the outcomes we want, and it has other benefits. You see, so it, it brings other benefits to our town. Overall, in fact, it will have a net positive impact on property values, as for example. So just automatically, that positive value. So just to think through that might be worth it, even though I think it is a challenge, but given that. Including our home in that part of town, you know, we tore it out of mid-century. We found and renovated a mid-century, probably. So I think that already that has happened in our town, so. Uh, it would be good to investigate that separately if we can make that another item, because we keep bringing it up and we keep shelving it.
Right. You, you're the one that. And you. I, sorry, so. I can, I guess. A, a comment that both of you have moved to is. We've made some changes to our code. And. I guess, my, my thought is, we haven't really seen. How effective those are. We have with regards to stormwater, we've started seeing several properties now that have. We've gone back and forth with the developer before we get to an approval, and we have homes that are. Changing that issue, that's not necessarily size of the home, but we now have imposed. Slightly tighter constraints on height, et cetera. We'll see how they play it out.
I mean, I, I would say that we may still do those kind of things, and, and in some ways we have to try those things, we have to keep. In some ways, my, you know, as you know, my point is always, we don't have to get locked in there. We can roll back regulation. I know that's very hard to do. My view has always been, we try, we see what the impact is. If it's not working, we roll it back.
Yeah.
But that's a separate issue. We may still continue doing that. I think it's always worth investigating, get the data, but again, you know, my request would be, love to see. Some starting point, because everyone's dimension of what is big is different. I think it would be good to ground us into that.
Okay, Brian, that's, that's something I'll get back to in a moment.
Three quick things. What is, I'm all for exploring the historical designation. I think that's fine to explore that. Um, the second thing is, I actually love the idea of somehow incentivizing people. To renovate versus, versus tear down. Now, I don't mean renovate and leave up the chimney. Or this, or the back wall of a house.
It's hard, it's very hard.
Yeah, well, we have to designate what renovate means, putting a second floor on your house, going out the back, whatever, that's renovation. Um. But that would have to be designation, but I love that idea, because the more people that do that, the, the better our neighborhood will look. Um, but as a, my last point is that as a council member, I am really screaming. For, for better guidelines when it comes to these permits, things that I in good consciousness. Feel I cannot approve, but do I have any, do I have any right not to approve something if it's, if it's met all the guidelines?
Well, I think, I think you had a lot of good questions for the town attorney.
Town attorney.
Aren't those, aren't those good challenging questions?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah, no, and that's the. The heart of the matter, if the council. Is finding that homes are too big, then, you know, as the manager noted, the code needs to be amended. To provide specific. Review criteria on the size of houses that can be the basis for. You know, a permit review, grant or denial. Because right now, we have setbacks and. Just adopted the height restriction, got stormwater drainage, but you don't have anything that. Restrict, restricts other types of massing.
I think it's time for us to restrict other types of massing.
So, and then, what do, what do you mean exactly by that?
Size, no, I, we do have to look at the lot and the size. How many times have I said to developers, developers? The house is just too big, too big for the lot, too big for the house next door, for the house, whatever.
So, one, one thing that the, the town of Chevy Chase has is a floor area ratio requirement. So the floor area that is permissible is based on the size of the lot.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, uh, another question I have, which addresses the economic, uh, issue, which I know. And also, uh, kind of, so remember when twenty years ago, the county council? Took measures to, to limit the size of houses. Maybe we could find out what, if there, if there's any research that has really affected the value of houses in the county. And I would just guess that absolutely not. But wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be some interesting information? So if the council does decide to do something.
Definitely, yeah, I, I think that would be helpful, and I can think of other arguments that, that came up. Some folks would argue that, yes, a giant house obviously is valuable. But there's also value, value in preserving existing community character. But there's also value, value in preserving existing community character, preserving green space, trees. Track people to come to Somerset to begin with, so you're striking the right balance, you know, is important and doesn't devalue properties.
So I think that would be good for, I mean, our staff.
It would be good to understand because pricing is known as part of the place, so if if it's not. It's, you know, it's based on a unit size of the house, so if you're reducing the size, potentially. Changes the the economics of it, it would be good to find out.
I I also think we could get uh information from appraisers and real estate. Professional, you know, agents. To see what they would think about it.
Yeah.
And and.
I think, I think, I mean, I'll repeat, it'd be good to start with aligning, because I suspect, you know, even Colin, you made it every year. Everyone has a different sense of what's the right look. What you think is right is not everyone's, you you know, it's just a path and. So to the extent we can define and clarify that, it will be important.
Right, I, you got it, great suggestion, I mean, that's how we'll wrap up this this discussion, it's like a homework assignment for council members to. Identify some existing home areas in the town that either can find a. Perfect character for the town or perhaps some example that I don't consider.
Could, could we also separately start looking into the historic uh designation if that's possible?
Yeah, I'll I'll reach out to HPC at least to to just see what the process would be for adding to the registry. Um, and I could also just put together. Uh, and maybe I can talk to Ron and Doug about what are the different tools that other towns have used. Um, between lot size and impervious surface coverage, the wall length, just kind of a list of the different.
About the that that idea of the floor area. That could be another thing that could really help us here.
Right, right.
You know, something.
We may not be able to get historical designation the whole time because there are so many new homes there now, but I know that you can also find for. Individual historical definition for one house, um, you might want to see what we think about for, you know. Mid-century ranches as, as you can do that.
Interesting, yeah. Or a street section, you know, it would be worth exploring.
But I I, but I think it would be difficult to encourage somebody to.
But maybe if it becomes a, a tax benefit, but I don't know.
Let's get the information, you know, when we did, when we did our orientation for the new council. A couple of years ago, we never got to the HPC part, so that's a good time.
Right, let's move on to the next item, uh, some updates from the manager's solar panel installation. Oh, oh, I missed, sorry, I fall.
Very, just very quickly, it's just a, it's basically a boilerplate proclamation that we do basically every year to ensure we get the Tree City designation, so. Um, yeah, if you have any recommendations to change, I'm happy to do it, but otherwise I'll just put it as.
I want a bigger sign.
Bigger signs, I can ask them.
Yeah, bigger than us, I want a Tree City designation too, but that's a separate topic, I think it exists.
It does. Bee City.
Do you have a sign Tree City?
I know you're serious, sorry, I know you're very serious.
Solar panel installation at town hall.
So, um, just a quick background, I'll try to get us back on schedule as best I can. You remember, we had approved in the budget last fiscal year to do the town hall. And the the company that we hired, the guy actually fell and broke his arm, so he he ended up about nine weeks behind schedule, so then. We ended up finishing this, this summer, um, so it fell into this fiscal year. So, so we budgeted for town hall last year, pool this year. We ended up doing pool, or we ended up doing town hall this year, so we used the money for the pool. In this year's budget, that makes sense, the money doesn't carry over year to year. So the the environment committee requested that we, we amend our budget to still do the pool this year. My only trepidation with that is just we have the the construction already ongoing at the town pool, which. Makes it tough to try to squeeze in, um, and we probably don't want to do it while the pools open. Um, so while I I. Respectfully, uh, I I think my recommendation would be to to have that discussion as part of the the budget season this year and.
I I I just, sorry, I don't do. So thank you for bringing it up, and let's just go around the old issue, Ron.
Yeah, I'm laser, I actually was at the meeting and I explained to them about full construction, but they just carried on. Anyway, so, yeah, I I I do not support, I do not support doing it twenty twenty four, um, because of the pool problem. And going to twenty five, I should make it more existent.
Uh, we're gonna ask how much did they, I felt that one.
Uh, actually, that's a good question, I don't have it right in front of me, but if I recall, it was about sixty eight thousand dollars for the pool, it was maybe. Fifty thousand dollars for the town hall, so we have an extra eighteen thousand in our budget, but we would need to. Then add, you know, the extra fifty thousand.
I think, I think they're, they're probably just, they want to make sure it happens, right, that's what's on their mind. Yeah, I think we are all aligned that we want it to happen, so the question is, are you gonna put it in the next year's budget, for sure?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think pending this conversation, you know, I'll I'll have a conversation with Barton to.
I think that's what they, he just needs to, they probably just want to be like, hey, you're not gonna, because it's no longer half budgeted, it's not happening and it's dead.
Yeah.
You know, he probably wants some comfort that it's not happening.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we we want it to happen, there's a practical dimension here, which is that we cannot do it until the construction is done, which would take us into the new.
Yes, sad one.
I just, I just wouldn't do anything to possibly get in the way of opening that pool. Or putting more construction material at the pool, let's just finish our renovation and let's do this.
So, nothing further there, committee membership recruitment.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you want.
The reason I put this on here, I just wanted to let the council know that uh, we do have three. Vacancies in chair, uh, equity inclusion, traffic and uh, history. And uh, and this is really, I wanted to put this on there for the, yeah, members of the council that are. In the newer generations, that I I really, I really hope that you can help. They find you and Jim, uh, some some newer, some newer residents.
Insulting, you're saying I don't know young people.
So newer residents that you're in, I think that's what you, your peers, your peers, you know, because I think. I think there's a lot of potential. New leadership in the, in the swim, in the swim team area and then also the school. Community and all that, that's, I don't mean to diss.
I think you have to be realistic, I I don't think you're being realistic about committee involvement.
I don't think, I'm talking about chair, I'm not.
Chair, I think, I think people that are, pardon me, younger, don't have the time. Because they're raising a family and they're working and they're busy.
There, there are some, and and many of the committee chairs that we have started out as chairs when they were in that.
I think it's just really, I think it's inappropriate and short sighted to say we should be looking for only younger people, okay?
No, no, I'm not looking at all.
If I'm out there in the peanut gallery listening to this, I might not feel so good about what you just.
If anybody objects, if anybody objects to this conversation, please call me at their TV land. And and you're welcome to volunteer. I'm just saying that peer to peer, you you know, these are not mine, I don't have children in school. I I'm not involved with the swim team committee specifically, I'm just saying that peer to peer helps. So, and so, so I I respect your view and so then. Given the fact that you're liaison to some committees that have newer residents, please consider recruiting.
I respect your views, but I'm not gonna change.
So I, I respect, I'm glad, that's why we have a process, so I respect your comment for deciding. And then my challenge back to you is, since you know so many people that are newer. Please come up with three nominees to chair these committees.
All right, we're gonna.
I have one clarifying question, what happened to the chair of the history?
He was very good.
He said, thank you, your chair wants to go.
Just one, is the permit application process, if you you want to build something, which committee will reserve one? Sorry, I was completely joking.
Maybe you can be on the council.
Privacy permission.
I can, I can take this, Councilmember Heller might also, um, you know, want to add add her two cents as well, um. I think the council had introduced this but not adopted it at the request of the committee, um. Just taking a step back, the concern, the committee had had put together with the help of Ron, a consent form. For the use of your picture and identifying you in the town journal, um. It, I I think in the committee's opinion, it was a little bit too much legalese with all due respect to Ron. Um, and then it was just a little bit intimidating for people that, you know. For the most part, it hasn't been an issue before, I think that the concern that still exists is just for children. Um, and how best to move forward with that, I think the committee, um. Is recommending that. The the town just discontinue the mentions of names, uh, uh, excuse me, the the streets.
Streets.
Identifying people in the town journal, which has been the practice, um, and. Um, asking the town attorney to take a look at their truncated kind of version of the consent form to see if that. Works for children's consent.
They wanted something easier, shorter, sweeter, you know, not so, you know, you read, if you read the old one, you might not. Want your kid to participate in anything, you'd be worried about it, but, so we just want something easier, we just want a way to protect the children, that's all. You know, um, and so we came up with an alternative. Uh, form that we'd like Ron to look at and say it's okay or it's not. If Ron's good with it, we're good with it.
Right, Ron?
So we can recommend that.
And I have to add, the person on the committee that wrote it is a lawyer, so, so, uh.
So we have dueling views.
Yeah, let's make it happen, we need it. But that's true for anything.
That's true.
So, so, but wait a minute, I think, I think it has to be introduced.
So, we we have, we have to agree.
But it has to be, yeah.
Because it's a new, it would be a new reservation. Uh, the last is just sort of administrative, just looking at if if everybody, you know, if we can take five minutes to look at our calendars. So last year, uh, uh, essentially following what we did last year, which was, we had a kind of super session. At our first work session, did an an hour and a half, I think, of our work session and then. I think, I think if I recall, last year we did an hour and a half work session and then maybe a. Hour, uh, regular work session, so half, chunk our regular work session in half and use, uh. So we could, we could do that and, you know, buy sandwiches or whatever, um, and then the following Monday, um, to to save it for. Any follow-up discussion that's needed and then, um, hopefully that then takes us into introduction in April and adoption in in May.
So what do you, do you have some?
So, yeah, the the recommend, I guess, the the first date would be Monday, March eighteenth, which is the our standing. Work session dates, so I think the, if we follow what we did last year, it would be from five thirty to seven, would be dedicated to the budget. And then from seven to eight, we would do, um, that kind of regular work session. And then the next, I I just kept Monday because they generally are are where, when we meet, but, um. Monday, the twenty fifth, and, you know, five thirty works again, or seven is easier, or six, I, you know, defer defer to you all.
Okay, so is that cool with everybody? And again, if you're not in town, you can be on Zoom.
Okay.
Oh, that's better. Okay, and then, and then there's the third option too.
Um, I mean, if you want, we could do, I think we were able to do it in two last year, but we could.
Well, we should book it.
We could book a third one, um.
Well, the, when's it introduced?
April first, yeah.
So then, so then, um.
Um, I mean. If you want, we could just do back to back nights and do March twenty.
Well, well, actually, you know what, I think that I, what I would recommend is, usually if. The second meeting, if there's a lot of questions, it's not gonna, you aren't gonna answer them in one day. So I would say just to reserve Monday, April first, before the, um, before the council, council meeting.
Okay.
To just be prepared possibly in six o'clock, is that, is that cool? Because it's just the introduce, because you'll be able to change.
That's fine, yeah, very cool.
Okay, well, thank you.
So, uh, at five thirty on the twenty fifth, or is there a a different time that is more?
Earlier, so we're not, you know, we get tired.
Yeah, I thirty, five thirty. Okay.
And you, I would send the polls.
I I'll do that, um, either this evening or tomorrow, I'll I'll send you all calendar invitations.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so I guess that concludes the meeting, that was the last, that was the last item on the, uh, on the work section.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.